Good evening. I call the October 8th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting of the Richland 2 Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Washington.
I move to approve the agenda for the October 8th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
The motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. And we do have Mr. Trapp on the line, on the telephone. He'll be with us via the telephone.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Trapp? Mr. Trapp, can you hear me?
I can barely hear you, but I can hear you a little.
Okay, we're voting right now. Yes. Did you guys get a pop-up?
Madam Chair, I can't get on the computer.
Okay. You can do a hand vote, Mrs. Agostini. So, all in favor? We'll just do a hand vote for everyone. And Mr. Trapp, if you can let us know. All in favor?
I voted the affirmative.
That's six yes, zero no. The motion passes, and Mrs. Nash will be joining us shortly. We will now move to item 3.1, Executive Session. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
I move to convene Executive Session for the purpose of discussing student appeals, student admission requests into the district's Adult Education Program, and employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, you can't hear me. Okay, the motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden and seconded by Mrs. Agostini to go into Executive Session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. And we will take a hand vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. And Mr. Trapp?
I vote the affirmative.
Okay. He's voting in affirmative. The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion passes. The board will now enter into Executive Session. May I have a motion to end Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
I move that we concluded Executive Session at 6:01.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden, seconded by Mrs. Nash to end Executive Session at 6:01 PM and resume public session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, board members, please vote. And I want to remind everyone that Mr. Trapp is joining us via the telephone. Did everyone get a pop-up? Not yet? Okay. A motion. Did everyone get an opportunity to vote? So you're going... Okay, let's just go ahead and do a hand vote, please. Mr. Trapp? Is Mrs.?
I voted the affirmative whenever that time comes.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now resume public session. We will now move into the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. I have the opportunity of presenting our speaker for this evening, and it's Dr. Vanessa Dunn-Guiden, who is the CEO of Consultant Experts and Associates, LLC. CEA is a global training counseling firm that assists organizations in improving training and organization effectiveness. Dr. Guiden served in the United States Army as a human resource specialist for 10 years. As a congenital victim advocate, she has been certified over 3,500 sexual assault response coordinators and victim advocates. Her training is provided globally to thousands of military organizations, colleges, and corporations on the Hush topics: sexual assault, sexual harassment, drug facilitated sexual assault, LGBTQ sexual assault, disabled veterans, sex trafficking, suicide prevention, and domestic violence. And we all know that October is Domestic Violence Month. Dr. Vanessa is a survivor of military sexual trauma and the founder of Hush No More, a nonprofit organization that provides a platform to allow survivors and their families a safe place to share their story, elevate and heal from trauma. Her personal survival and healing journey gives audience an example of how someone can go from being a victim to becoming a champion. Additionally, she is an award-winning survivor advocate. Her groundbreaking work with survivors and the military has led her to creating and producing the Hush No More documentary, book, trauma-releasing coloring book, poetry book, and when a date turns to rape. Her award-winning documentary has been shown internationally in Japan, South Africa, Denmark, Kuwait, Jordan, to bring awareness to the Hush topics that would lead to prevention of horrific crimes. One of her most proudest moments was when she was elected as the Executive Director of the Sexual Assault Advocacy Network, SAAAN, working with over 1,500 victim advocates to provide enhanced services to survivors. Dr. Guiden believes that awareness plus knowledge equals prevention. She is the proud mother of two former Richland 2 District students. Welcome, Dr. Guiden, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I want y'all to come on a journey with me and to imagine a little girl that's upstairs, asleep, and she hears a loud sound, like boom, right? So she gets up, and her five-year-old little feet goes downstairs, and she's real quiet because she knows she's not supposed to be out of the bed. She goes downstairs, and she looks around, and she sees her mother up against the wall, crying, and blood on the wall. And her dad is yelling, "Stop crying. Shut up, for I make you shut up." And you wake up the kids. That is my journey with domestic violence, and I'm not the only child. Some of you in this room have experienced something similar, and I was five, and I still remember. There's children today that go to school, and they have to deal with that. They did not sleep the night before because their parents was arguing, because one of the parents took them out of the home in the middle of the night, and they still have to show up to go to school. So sometimes, it's greater than the lesson of the day, but it's a life lesson of how you can show love and kindness and remember that children are going through a lot at home, and they may not always show up ready to learn, but you are the ones that's going to make a difference in their lives, and they'll remember you forever. What can you do when children come to you and choose you out of all children, I mean, out of all teachers and parents to have a conversation with? I encourage you to love on them, to not judge them, and also use the acronym GIVE. I use this acronym to encourage you to be able to talk to them and be able to get through the conversation, because we never really know how to handle this conversation when we know children are going through some things. And that's also with your coworkers, because coworkers are in horrific situations as well. GIVE, G stands for gentle. Always be gentle with people. Be gentle and loving and kind with them when they come and talk to you. I, be interested in the conversation. Nothing else is more important than this conversation that this child or a coworker or a friend or a family member is talking to you about any type of trauma. V, validate how they feel. Don't suppress how they feel. If they feel like this is the worst day of their life, it's probably the worst day of their life. E, encourage, elevate, and empower them. Everything that leaves your mouth should be something encouraging that makes them feel better and makes them feel better about having a conversation with you and when they leave. So GIVE. G, be gentle. I, interested. V, validate them. E, encourage, elevate, educate, do everything that you can to make them feel better. My organization is called Hush No More. We support survivors of domestic violence, human trafficking, child sexual abuse, all of those topics that families and friends have a hard time discussing. That's what we do. On October 19th, we have an amazing Domestic Violence Walk in Ermo. I know it's outside of Richland County District, School 2 District, but we would love for you all to come. The event is free. We give out T-shirts, medals. We love on you. We love for kids to come, because kids need to know about domestic violence and teen dating violence. They should know what's going on and be prepared to protect themselves and have knowledge to help their friends as well. So you're welcome to come out. It's going to be an amazing event. If anyone needs support or just resources or just the love, come find us. We're all available at hushnomore.org. You can find us online. My email is info@hushnomore.org. And our goal is to have amazing events in the community, to love on you, to support you, and to love on our babies who are going through, because that was my journey and a lot of your journey as well. Peace and blessings to you all, and thank you, Dr. Elkin Scott, for inviting me and also for supporting Hush No More and being a volunteer. I honor you. Thank you. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Guiden. We will now move to item 5.1, the Consent Agenda. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the Consent Agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda, excuse me, for October 8th, 2024.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mrs. Washington. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. Did everyone receive a pop-up? Because I have not received one yet. Okay, we would just do a hand vote. Okay, it just popped up. Thank you. We're waiting for the motion and the vote. So do we need to take a hand vote for you? She's the only one? Okay. I'm waiting to see it on the screen so I can know how everyone has voted. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to public participation. We have one person who has signed up to address the board. You will be given three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to red to... I'm sorry, from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When the time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear a tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Before we begin, I will remind you that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy BEDH, comments from the public should not include gossip, thephematicary words, or abusive and vulgar language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about an individual, school personnel, or any other person connected with the school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedure as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation will be referred to a staff member for response at a later time. We would now call up Kenesha McCray.
Good evening, members of the Richland District 2 School Board, administrators, and community members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. I am a speech launch pathologist in our district. I stand before you to advocate for the vile contributions we make to our students' success and to address some pressing concerns regarding our working conditions, salaries, and how we are regarded within the district. Speech launch pathologists play an essential role in helping students overcome communication challenges impacting their academic performance and social interactions. Our work is crucial, yet we often face obstacles that hinder our ability to serve our students effectively. I want to address the reality many of us face. Despite our specialized training and commitment, our salaries do not reflect the expertise we bring. Many speech launch pathologists in our district manage unmanageable workloads, which compromise the quality of care we can provide to our students. We've recently lost a dedicated colleague who expressed her concerns regarding some of these issues. This is a stark reminder that without addressing these challenges, we risk losing more talented professionals who are passionate about their work. To ensure that we contribute to serving our students effectively, I urge the board to consider increasing salaries for speech launch pathologists to align with our qualifications, evaluate our workload to create more manageable and effective service model, improving working conditions so that we have the necessary resources to perform our jobs, foster an environment of respect where our contributions are recognized and valued. Furthermore, I encourage the board and all necessary personnel to consider meeting with speech launch pathologists. Open communication will help bridge any gaps and foster collaboration, ensuring our voices are heard and our concerns are understood. In closing, by addressing these issues, we can create a supportive environment for speech launch pathologists, which will ultimately lead to better outcomes for our students. Let's work together to ensure every member of our educational team feels valued and empowered. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much, Mrs. McCray. We will now move to student... I'm sorry, we will now move to 7.0, Voting on Executive Session Items. 7.1, Student Appeals. May I please have a motion regarding student appeals?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter?
I move to... I'm sorry, one second. I move to deny the appeal for Students 1 and Student 2.
Would you just separate the two for me, please?
I move to deny the appeal for Student number 1.
The motion has been made to deny the appeal for Student number 1. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Porter, if you would check the motion?
It's correct.
Board members, please vote. The motion is five yes, two no. The motion passes. Mrs. Porter?
I move to deny the appeal for Student number 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. The motion is six yes, one no. The motion passes. We will now move to 7.2, Student Admission Requesting to the District's Adult Education Program. May I please have a motion regarding the student admission request into the district adult education program?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for Students 1 through 3.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Porter. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. That's correct. Board members, please vote. Okay. Seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to item 7.3, Employment Recommendations for Certified Releases. May I please have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion?
It was...
Oh, she's... Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to New Business No Action Requested. 8.1, Policy Revision Proposal. Policy BID, Board Member Compensation and Expenses. Dr. Moore will present to the board. I'll turn it over to Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, Policy BID, Board Member Compensation and Expenses, has been updated to reflect the changes that were discussed at the special call board meeting. So if you look at the policy, you will note that the area that's underlined will read... I'll start at the beginning of that sentence. "Board members may receive a per diem allowance in the amount determined by the board." Parentheses, $384 per meeting for board members, $480 per meeting for the board chair, close parentheses, "for attendance at meetings as defined in Policy BE, Board Meetings." That was the only change that the board requested during the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I will now open it up to board members. Are there any questions or comments? There are no questions and comments. We will now move to item 8.2, Board Self-Evaluation Summary. The agenda item in this session is a summary of the board's self-evaluation conducted at the special call board meeting on September 27, 2024. At this time, I will ask Mrs. Porter, Board Vice Chair, to present to the board. Mrs. Porter?
Yes, so I'm going to read the Richland School District 2 Board Assessment Summary Key Findings. This is indeed a summary of what was given to us. I'll start with the positive aspects for the self-evaluation, and it was that the board is generally committed to its mission and understands its roles and responsibilities and is actively engaged. Areas for Improvement. The board could be more mission-focused and effective in carrying out its duties, and there are concerns about trust among members, and the overall climate could be improved. Recommendations. Define the roles of the board and superintendent more clearly, address trust issues, and create a more positive and inclusive environment to improve the overall climate. In summary, the Richland 2 District 2 School Board has areas of strength, but also significant opportunities for improvement. By addressing the issues identified in this assessment, the board can become more effective, trusting, and supportive of its mission. There were also some other more specified recommendations of action steps, and that is board development, training, and coaching. This is necessary to build trust, refocus on the mission, establish a better culture, build cohesion, and more clearly define roles and responsibilities. Plan for how you want the board to perform after the election. This involves setting clear expectations for the board's future direction. Additionally, it was emphasized that the importance of everyone making extra efforts to show each other that they are trusted, heard, and valued. This can be demonstrated through greater inclusion, inviting all opinions, listening intently, inviting participation in decision-making, and not taking dissenting opinions personally. The board assessment emphasizes the importance of using the feedback from the survey to improve interpersonal skills significantly. It encourages the board to seek further assistance from Ms. Betty M. Parker, CPTD, CPTD, excuse me, President of Sharper Development Solutions, on their development journey. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter, for that summary. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will continue to move forward. Item 8.3, Budget Update. This agenda item in section is a budget update. Dr. Moore, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as Ms. Williams, our Senior Chief Financial Officer, makes her way to the podium, want to just let the public know that the board did approve our budget last spring. And so this is an update on the 2024-2025 budget, as requested by the board. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Williams.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Moore, I stand before you to provide actually a status update on the items adopted in the 2025 General Fund Budget. Okay? So as it relates to the priority orders, I'll just quickly go through and just give you a brief update. As it relates to number one, related to the health insurance increase, we put funding in the budget for half of the year, and that increase goes into effect in January, as it normally does with health insurance increases. Number two relates to the teacher salary step increase. That has been implemented at the start of the fiscal year, and it's reflected in the paychecks of teachers. We have implemented 3 and 4 as it relates to our contractual obligations and insurance requirements. Okay? We've hired the seven new teachers for growth in the budget. All seven of those FTEs have been hired. We've implemented the classification and compensation study, and those salary changes were implemented or reflected in the paychecks at the start of the fiscal year. The step increase for those non-teaching positions was also implemented and, again, reflected in the compensation at the start of the fiscal year. As you know, number eight, we've implemented the teacher salary increase...
As you know, number eight, we've implemented the teacher salary increases to start at $50,000. All 31 of the ESAR positions were moved to the general fund. Number 10 related to our multilingual learners. Out of those three positions, the liaison position has been hired. The two teacher positions are currently vacant. As it relates to our special education budget requests, six of those assistants have been hired. So has one of the teaching positions. We've made that upgrade for that partial FTE to a full FTE, and then we have one vacant teacher position and the vacant sign language interpreter. And number 12, you can see we've been able to fill one of those positions for instructional teacher support, and one of those positions is vacant. Okay? We've been able to implement the increase to our at-risk budget due to our increase in our students in poverty. We've continued to fund some of the fine arts funding that was included in our ESAR budget, so that's been implemented. The pathways to promotion position has been filled. As it relates to our instructional facilitators and priority number 16, 22 positions are filled, and we will go further into that when the discussion is had related to, I believe, 8.6 related to Pontiac. And seven of those positions are vacant. As it relates to the, the interventionist at our centers, one of those positions is filled, and we have three vacant positions in that area. Okay? Priority number 19, all four of those requested counselor positions have been filled. We're still looking to fill that nurse floater position. Number 21, one of the counseling positions is filled related to the request at Blythewood Middle and Longleaf Middle, and one of those positions is vacant. We've entered into the contract for our guest teacher services. That's going well. We're continuing to monitor that contract as we will throughout the remainder of the fiscal year. We've increased our athletic stipends at the start of the fiscal year. We're still trying to hire for our athletic trainers, so all five of those positions are still vacant. We're still, we're working with transportation right now to finalize the implementation. I mean finalize the plan for our activity drivers. So that's, that's in the works right now. The, the position on number 26, that, that has been completely implemented, that, that temporary position is now a FTE. We've upgraded those AP positions at all four of our centers and hired the one at CFA. And number 29, that position is vacant. But let me go back quickly because I skipped something. I did want to draw it to your attention. I do know how to count on this one, so 16 to 18, we're missing something. So number 17 relates to our, our two teachers that were at the R2E school. One of, one of those, as of the date of this presentation, one of those positions was filled, one was vacant, and I believe we placed a copy of that at your desk. Okay? So just to summarize all of the positions. So of the 103.6 positions requested in the FY25 budget, 79.6 have been filled, 24 vacant, for roughly about a 79, 77% fill rate. And then to just transition really quickly into the fund balance at the end of fiscal year '24. We're in the midst of the audit right now, so we won't be able to finalize that number until, you know, the audit is completed, and that will be submitted to the State Department of Education before December 1st. But right now, we estimate adding about $6 million. Again, this is just an estimate. We just want to make sure that everything is finalized. But once that, the audit is complete and we have final numbers, then we'll be back before you, for you to decide how you'd like to utilize that increase to fund balance. Okay? So also, as requested, we have a demo of the education funding dashboard. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Strader, our Executive Director of Financial Services, to perform that demo.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Moore, how are you guys doing tonight? Doing well. We're going to give you a live demonstration. I don't know if this has ever been done before, so hopefully I don't mess up. Okay, so the education funding dashboard as given by the State Revenue Fiscal Affairs Office can be found at this link, or you can actually go to their website and go to data and then education. You'll find the same information. So we're going to click on this link here. Press right button, okay? We'll click on this link. It's going to take us directly to the dashboard. And when you get to the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs website, this is where you would go to actually access the dashboard. And once you get to the dashboard, you will see a number of tabs at the top. Funding, quick facts, compare districts, aided classrooms, and scatter plots. And I hope to tour each one of those real quickly. But the first thing you'll see on this first page, and it's under funding, is a map, and it's got all the districts in South Carolina highlighted at this point in time. So the, the data that you see on this funding dashboard at this point in time, and I'll show you how to compare districts. You'll see a couple of bar graphs at the bottom. You'll see expenditures, revenues, and that's for the entire state. $11 billion, $12 billion, that's for the entire state. And then you'll see some information over to the far right. Let me see if I can highlight that for you. Far right gives some information. 60%, 60.9% pupils in poverty, average teacher salary, expenditures per student, et cetera. And you have a lot of information there on the right, and you have a couple of donut graphs here which highlight revenues for the entire state, and it also breaks down elements of how those revenues are broken down. And then the same thing for expenditures. You have elements of how those expenditures are broken down, and keep in mind that is for the entire state. Here, those three bars that you see there are the charter districts. So you can click or hover over those and get the information for the charter districts and the entire map. The way the map works is the darker the district, the, you'll notice that the revenues are highlighted, the darker the, the information there, the higher the revenue. So if you want to hover over some of those districts with the darker information, you can actually see the revenue that they brought in. And this is Greenville here, you know, it's a pretty high district, so it brought in that much revenue. And you can, of course, find Richland Two there and then compare to Richland One. So if you hover over, you'll get that information. But I do want to call your attention to the fact this is not live data. The information that's on the Revenue and Fiscal Affairs dashboard currently is from '22, and that's the information, the latest audit information they have to give us the data, okay? So it is not live information. Now, the neat thing about the dashboard is you can actually go to, the select map type only affects the map. It does not affect the donut graph or the bar graph. So you can change your data on the, on the map to say, we want to see what expenditures look like in the state. We can change that, and it will actually change the map and give you higher to lower information. And also, you can choose, you can, you know, our interest right now is Richland One, Richland Two, so we'll click on Richland Two, and it will change our revenue expenditures, and it will change the donut graphs to break down those revenues and expenditures. So revenue for Richland Two for '22 was $460 million. Expenditures was $450 million. And then it also breaks down an expenditure per student and a revenue per student. And keep in mind, the data to the right is some very relevant data giving us average teacher salary information. And if you want to, I'm not sure if I can do it here or not, but you can actually hit Ctrl if you have a computer in front of you. You can Ctrl, hold down your mouse, and you can actually highlight a number of districts right around Richland Two to get that information. For the... To get back out of that information, you just click over in the white space, and that'll take you back to the state information. So that's a brief overview of the funding tab. If you want to go to quick facts that give you, gives you information for the entire state. So notice that the map is highlighted completely, so that's all the districts in the state. Again, lighter color to darker purple color gives you the selection there, which is, I can't read that far, but you could actually change that dropdown to give you a different selection by clicking on the dropdown. If we wanted to see expenditures, we could go to expenditures, and it would change that map to tell us which count, which districts have greater expenditures. That's for the entire state. If we wanted to compare Richland Two to the entire state, we would, of course, it gives you average teacher salary, students in poverty, students per teacher information, revenues per student, expenditures per student, and it also gives you the entire revenue and expenditures of the state and a couple of neat bar graphs here that tell you which students meeting or exceeding the expectations in ELA in math compared to the, to the state. But to compare Richland School District Two to that information, we just hover over Richland Two and get Richland Two information compared to the state. And it actually does a comparison here. Average teacher salary for Richland Two is $54,443. For the state, $54,814, et cetera. And it also tells our revenue and expenditures here compared to the state in the aggregate. And of course, gives some bar graphs compared to the state. And then number of students from FY22 is $27,417. The state as a whole had 751,000 students. And teachers, 1,736 in the district, and for the state total was $46,000. If you want to compare districts, this is a neat feature for the dashboard. You will click on that tab, and it gives you another, a number of data elements here, and you could actually compare by number of data elements here which coincide with these data elements. And you can also sort by ascending or descending. I believe that's descending, and it's sorted by A right now. So the, the element is percentage of students in poverty. So Allendale, Dillon, et cetera are, here's your descending order. But notice the elements underneath are not in descending order. So if I wanted to find out what those were in descending order, then I would just change this factor here and drop it down to a different data element to get comparison by B. And that would give us a December... Okay, I'm out of time. Okay. All right, sorry. Thank you. But that's a brief overview of the dashboard. Very handy information. And what we'll do is we'll kind of get rid of that dashboard and go back to the slide and advance that slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strader and Ms. Williams. So, board, just want to give you an update. I hope you can see that we have been working very hard, our HR department as well as our finance, with about an 80% accomplishment with the personnel. And so that's been a heavy lift, but we're very excited about the work that's been done, but know that we have things that we still need to work on. So thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you guys so much. I will now open it up to the board. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Nash, I see you.
I just was going to say, thank you so much for this. This was like very easy to read, and it was so transparent. Thank you so much. It was amazing. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Mrs. Washington?
Yes, I have a few questions. Thank you so much for the updates on the positions. So with the 24 positions, if they are not filled, what will happen for those positions?
Because those positions and the funding associated with them are in the recurring budget, they will stay there until they're filled.
And then last year, we were presented with a list of priorities from administration for the fund balance. Yeah, for the fund balance, is that something that we're going to receive again this year? So last year, we got a list of like capital priorities and...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you. And you, first of all, thank you for the presentation. And also, I really appreciated you giving us an estimate on the fund balance, the expected fund balance, because usually we have to wait until everything's been submitted prior to us giving us an idea. So thank you for giving us the estimate. My question is back to line number 16. Can we, refresh my memory, what is the virtual instruction facilitator?
That is our full mine teacher. So there are certified teachers that are filling vacancies in the classroom. So they're virtual teachers, and then we supplement the classroom with a teaching assistant so that students do have a certified teacher as we are continuing to look for certified teachers to hire in our district.
So, and just so that I'm clear, this is the virtual teacher, then?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the facilitator. It's the one in the classroom.
Okay, so it seems like if we've got, we've filled 22 positions, and my understanding is seven of those have been, is that counting the positions that are going to Pontiac Elementary or not counting?
We have used, as you'll see in the Pontiac presentation, we have used positions that were allocated to fill positions at Pontiac.
So we've taken the positions from this?
We've taken vacant positions that we had not filled, yes, to supplement and provide the additional resources at Pontiac.
So how are the students learning that don't have the virtual instructors?
The, the, I'm going to defer to Dr. Foster because I don't want to say anything out. I'm sorry. I don't... Yes, we're going to defer that question to the superintendent. So we'll allow Dr. Moore to address that. Thank you.
We have the virtual instructors in the classroom. We have the TAs in the classroom also to support those. We still have positions, though, that we are still trying to fill. So in order to provide support to a school that had a larger number of students show up than we had planned for, we have shifted positions as we have outlined in the Pontiac presentation that we'll give later today or this evening to support those students that are in that, in those building, in that building, in those classrooms.
I hear what you're saying. I guess where I'm stuck is we've asked for 29. We were told we need 29 virtual instructors, but now it seems like we don't need them. That's my concern. If we've sent the money over to, or...
We shifted.
Well, we've shifted.
We shifted. It doesn't mean that we don't need them, Mrs. Agostini. We still are using them. We may not need them at school A, and we're using them at school B instead. So we're still using the positions. It's not that we're using them at school A.
So are elementary students that are going to have virtual instructors?
We don't use virtual in elementary, no.
Well, then how do you shift the position?
It's an FTE. We shift it from one to another. Is that correct, Dr. Foster? Am I explaining it correctly because maybe I need to explain it differently?
Okay, and I understand what you're saying. To me, what it boils down to then is that we did not need 29 virtual instructors. Thank you.
Mr. Foster, Dr. Foster, if you could come up.
Good evening, board members. So to answer your question, Mrs. Agostini, Mrs. Agostini, we had 29 virtual facilit, full mine teachers last year. So we budgeted for the 29 teachers with the anticipation that we were going to still need that many teachers. Our goal in working with the principals is to hire an in-person teacher for the classrooms. And so we were able to do that in... And so we were able to do that in most of our vacancies. And so currently, we're only using ten of the FTEs, ten virtual facilitate, ten virtual facilitators, because we only have ten full mine teachers. There are requests for additional full mine teachers, but they haven't been able to meet that demand yet either. So, right now, into, since we have those FTEs, when the need came up for additional staff at Pontiac, the superintendent made the decision to reallocate those vacant positions to positions that would be needed at Pontiac to cover the growth for them this year. And so we still have additional, we still have additional virtual facilitators if needed. And I'll share that information as far as what we use to cover the growth, um, coverage in the Pontiac presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members, any other questions?
I, I have a question.
Okay. Mrs. McFattan?
So, I'm sorry, Lindsay. I'm looking at your screen. Um, the Board approved twenty-nine posi-, twenty-nine of those positions. So if we need something else, I mean, I'm just trying to understand, if we approve twenty-nine of those, so it really doesn't matter if we approve twenty-nine of that type of position, because the superintendent can change it if she needs to. So I'm just trying to understand that, why do we even have to approve this? For budget-wise, I understand for the money, but then it doesn't have to necessarily be allocated like that, like what we go through.
Let me just make a comment.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, absolutely. We have twenty-nine FTEs. We don't have the bodies to cover the twenty-nine. So because those FTEs are there, and there's a need at a school, the superintendent has the autonomy and authority to take some of those FTEs to move them to another school. So it's not like we don't need them. We do need them. It's just that we don't have the bodies currently to fill the positions. So if there's a school in need, and we have someone that can do that, we're going to allocate the money over there. So I don't want anyone to leave here with the understanding that we have twenty-nine FTEs, and we approved that, and we really don't need it. We do need it. We just don't have the bodies now. So I would encourage you, if you know anyone, encourage them to go into elementary education, early childhood education, or become a sub and help us out so we can get those positions filled. So I hope I addressed your question, Mrs. McFattan.
I was just basically trying to figure out why do we have to approve- Why do we have to approve those if we're not going to use them? So basically, we're saying we need twenty-nine. We have them, but they're not filled, so we can take those out of there. I know we still need those, but I don't understand what the, why the Board has to approve all these different positions if, when the time comes, we don't have to approve for them to be moved or switched. And that was my original question when it came to, to Pontiac, because I think they need it.
Um, we're not at the Pontiac presentation right now, so if we can hold those questions until we get to Pontiac, I would greatly appreciate that. Moving forward, are there any other questions or comments? If not, we're, I'm going to take a point of order to recognize, um, former Mayor Steve Benjamin, who I saw walk in here. Thank you. Glad to have you. I saw your daughter come in earlier, so I was happy to see her, and then you came. So thank you for blessing us with your presence today. We're gonna continue to move forward. We will move to item eight point four, internal audit update. Dr. Moore, I will pass it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to have our internal auditor, Mrs. Myers, come to the podium. Board members, she will be presenting an update, as we are required to do annually, on her work as our internal auditor. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Myers.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Moore, and good evening, everyone. I would like to start off first just by briefly saying a little about, a little bit about what internal audit is. Their internal audit is like an independent and objective process to review various procedures. It could be financial procedures, operational procedures, and it is a consulting process because we want the auditor and the audity to actually talk to each other during an audit and make sure that we get good understanding of processes and procedures. Uh, we don't want it to seem like we're just, we know you're doing something wrong, be coming down, coming down at you. Again, it's supposed to be partnership, teamwork, a process where, again, our just getting a good understanding so that we can provide any recommendations for process improvements in the district. Um, also, with internal audit, we like to evaluate an organizational risk. With any organization, you know, you're trying to meet objectives. And so we also want to determine, um, either with senior leadership and others, what happens if we cannot achieve our risk? What is the risk of not achieving our objectives? So just a small bit about what has been done, um, in the previous year. When I first started, I followed up on the OIG audit report. I reviewed the implementation of, of the OIG recommendations, and it was more so like a cursory review, so I did not have actual written report, kind of just cursory review of looking at the recommendations and seeing what the district did to follow up on those recommendations and meet corrective actions. I do plan in the future to test sections of the report as more formal audits, since it was no, no several different items. I see where I can probably break down that report to actually do some follow-up audits in the future on the OIG recommendations. Then also, um, per request of the superintendent, I looked at the bond referendum, um, two thousand eighteen bond referendum funds and did an audit, um, to determine the district followed its procedures and our policies in regards with expending those funds. I noted some recommendations to improve internal controls, and there was no evidence of any misappropriation of that, by referendum funds. So what I have planned for the future, currently, I'm working on the time and effort audit. And time and effort is big with any employees that's being paid with federal funds. Um, in my previous job, um, time and effort was like, um, something that we looked at a lot in school districts, and we know that lots of employees in school districts who are paid in whole or in part with federal funds were not maintaining the required documentation for, um, the support the salaries paid with federal funds. And so there are federal requirements, and then the SCDE has very specific guidelines, um, that they look at for employees who are being paid, uh, with federal funds. So I'm currently doing the audit, looking at the, we'll pull a sample of employees who are being paid with federal funds and make sure that we are meeting the required standards. Also, I talked about teamwork in the earlier slide. You know, not many people actually ask for an audit, but the procurement, executive director of procurement asks for an audit. So, um, I will be doing a procurement audit, and we're gonna follow the state's procurement audit program by the State Fiscal Accountability Authority. And this, the same audit program that they're gonna use to test us in the future, I'm gonna do an audit using that same, um, audit program to ensure that we are in line with what their audit program, their guideline says. Also, um, there's some new guidelines that were implemented with fundraising, and so, um, anything that's new, we kind of want to look at it. And so, um, but since it is new, we're gonna look at like the latter part of this fiscal year, this school year, and just make sure that the schools are, um, implementing the new guidelines for fundraising adequately and correctly. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Myers. So Board, um, just as a reminder for the public, I know you're aware of this, the internal auditor reports directly to the superintendent. We meet monthly to discuss where she's at and what, what she's working on, and whatever systems or improvements that she feels that we need to be implementing. But there's also a dotted line from the Board to the internal auditor. And so that is why we give an annual report, and you will be receiving a letter that is much more detailed than the presentation today outlining, uh, the work that Ms. Myers has done. When I came on board, one of the areas that was of concern, that we wanted to make sure that we were doing what we're supposed to do, was to look at the referendum dollars. And so we've done that. Ms. Myers conducted her audit of that. And as you can see, there's some things that we need to tighten up around systems and our internal controls, but we are very, um, pleased to be able to say that there was no evidence of misappropriation of funds. So at this time, we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Really appreciate that. I will open it up to Board members. Are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much for those updates. Um, I do have a question for, um, Dr. Moore regarding the audit. Uh, previously during the budget session, we had talked about doing an audit and kind of looking at all of our programs, how much we're spending on those programs and the various initiatives. Is that something that would fall under our internal auditor, or is that something that we will be hiring, um, maybe a consulting firm or working with your administration to go through?
So I had a wonderful conversation with our senior chief of academics on that particular topic, Ms. Washington. And we're still working through, looking at, do we have the internal capacity to be able to take that on? And we haven't determined that as of this point. If we need to hire an outside consultant, we will definitely let the Board know. But it is something that we are looking at. Ms. Myers is one person. She has asked me for additional staff, and, and I have said no several times, every month. In fact, every month, she comes in, and the last thing on her agenda is to talk to me about additional resources so that she can perform more of the audits, the internal audits that we are actually wanting to do, and that is one of them. So we are looking at that. We have not forgotten that. So, thank you.
Board members, any other questions or comments? So I believe, Ms. Myers, we'll probably see you during the budget season up here asking us for more resources. So I look, I do look forward to that. Okay, we're gonna move forward to item eight point five, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, middle school achievement report. I will turn that over to Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the second of our presentations. The last board meeting, we did elementary education, and today we will be talking about our middle school achievement report for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. And so I would like to recognize our senior chief of academics. That would be, uh, Ms. Jennifer Morrison, and of course, our data queen, uh, Dr. Jennifer Coleman, who is the executive director of
And because, uh, the state summative assessments are the same for elementary and middle, we're gonna use the same format and metrics for consistency and transparency based on what we did last time. We will be providing the Board with more detailed subgroup data and additional requested information at a later time. So just know that we will definitely be doing that, and we're gonna stick to our eight-minute limit tonight. Uh, just like last time, you'll see there is movement to celebrate and concerning results that we're gonna be addressing. I have visited all of our middle schools at this point in the first month and couple of weeks. And, uh, again, no principal or teacher or district staff member is making excuses. It's, we've got a lot to do, a lot to figure out. All are focused on continuous improvement to ensure that each student has what is needed to perform at high levels. So, let's look at the data.
All right. So it's data time. Um, we're gonna start off, again, with the same format that we did for, uh, the elementary presentation, looking at the ELA scores for just our middle school kids. So reminder, they take this assessment at the end of the year. There are four levels. Does not meet, approaches, meets, and exceeds. The state metric for, um, being considered proficient is meets and exceeds. So that's our first slide. So when we look at where we're at, um, with ELA, looking at students meets and exceeding, it, it was a rough year. Uh, we anticipated, uh, some dips due to modality shifts and watching some trend data as we've watched this subgroup of kids move through. Um, but we did have a dip. I'm, I'm very glad to say that we are seeing some recovery in sixth grade when we look at the data from nineteen to twenty-four. So last time, we brought to you a slide that's really near and dear to my heart, which is watching what's happening, happening as a trend within our da-, our district. So we talked about the need to make sure that we're also looking at this slide and the cognitive dissonance that it brings when I have positives with red on them. But this is a category we don't want to watch increase. And these are our babies who are in the does not meets category. And we are seeing an increase in middle school in ELA with that. So when we move to middle school, there's, there's a little more good news here, and we were grateful for that, because our schools worked that math plan hard last year, especially our middle schools. Um, I was actually really proud of our middle schools. They came up with this concept of what does a middle school math desk look like? Um, and, and it didn't have a computer on it for an extended period of time. And as, as a mom of middle schoolers, really happy to hear that, that we were getting back to, um, some of the things that were prevented from us when, when we were, had heavy reliance on technology and getting back to some of those basics of, you've gotta touch math. You have to touch math to learn it. So we did see some increases in our seventh and eighth grade, and we're grateful for that. We know that we're still working on our recovery completely when it comes to meets and exceeds. Again, the slide looking at the does not meets, and this is the slide we do not want to see, whoops, increases on this slide. And we are seeing some increases in our sixth and eighth grade in the does not meets category. So one thing, as, um, Mrs. Morrison said, when we look at that subgroup information, which will be forthcoming in a board brief, really, we've kind of teased all of it with what we're looking at. When we talk about our change in our mobility and our increase in our poverty, those are gonna be the groups that we're struggling with the most right now. And I think a lot of that is reflected, as we're becoming a little more tail-heavy in the district, and that, that's where our challenge is at. Just as a reminder, we did not, we did give the new science test last year, but we received no scores. So there will be no slide for sixth grade. In reviewing our strategic plan goals, we do have two goals that are specific to middle school and the SC Ready Assessment. You can see where we are in moving towards that progress or having a slight regression. Sort of stayed same with math. I anticipate we'll see that come up this year based on trend data, um, and we're still working on that change with ELA.
So the contextual factors that we talked about during our last board meeting are really similar factors, maybe even exacerbated a little bit at the middle school level. Those increased, um, the crease, increases in poverty, uh, the increases in chronic absenteeism get higher and higher as you go into middle school and high school. And, uh, and we're actually, during the high school presentation next time, we'll talk a little bit more in-depth about chronic absenteeism, because it is such an issue particularly at the high school level, but it is also an issue at the, um, middle school level. Of course, another impactful context, uh, impactful contextual factor is teacher vacancies and turnover. That's always gonna create, um, a lot of concerns and not really being able to get where we need to get in terms of what students need to be able to perform on those final state summative assessments. So we are adjusting, as a district, to some relatively new realities, and it's gonna take quite a bit, actually, to make that happen. Um, I will say that, before I get to that, I do want to, this was a slide that, um, Mr. Arthur Newton created to share, uh, last, last meeting around, uh, reading at the elementary level, but this actually applies very much at the middle school level and high school level as well. And I just wanted to take a moment to think about, when you're reading, what is the difference, um, between when you read on a page and you read on a screen? And so this is something we really have to work with our students on. So cognitive load is a big part of reading, and cognitive load is how much your brain can take in and remember at one time. And so when you're looking at a page, it's all right there, and you can glance back. On a screen, that moves. And so retaining that information can be more difficult, especially for our elementary kids who oftentimes will read using fingers and lots of motor skills. That is a big concern when we move to a screen. Visual processing is very, very different in a digital way. And then attention and self-regulation, when it comes, uh, from reading on a page versus reading on a screen, when our brains may accustomed to, be accustomed to click, 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 click. And that's not what needs to happen during that testing situation. So working with kids around that digital reading is really, really important. And of course, memory and recall are important all the way across. But I know our educators who wanted to sort of think about that, because that is one of the big switches that we saw last year, and one of the reasons that we saw that change in ELA scores. So, as you know, the new reality that we have is gonna require new tools, but really tools in terms of how to gain traction with the students and the teaching force that we have right now. And principals are up for the, um, for the challenge of that. I think our teachers are up for the challenge of that as well. So we are continuing our district math plan because it's shown to be successful. We're supporting that online modality. We're continuing the use of district assessments to help predict and then look at data to make decisions for instruction in the classroom. decisions for instruction in the classroom. We're continuing development of data literacy, this year focusing on leadership and how principals work with their leadership teams. We are implementing inclusion into the regular classroom at ATS I schools. And we're really pushing into progress monitoring and differentiated school support as we're moving through. Thank you very much. And I will turn it over to Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison and Dr. Coleman. Jen Squared, as I call them. Board members, I just wanna remind you of what we said when we looked at elementary last board meeting. And that is 80% of our students should be in Tier One. And if we have 80% of our students in Tier One, then we have the resources to meet the needs of the 20% that would be Tier Two, Tier Three. So I hope that you, as you look at this academic plan that Ms. Morrison has put together, we recognize that it is aggressive and we shared that with principals. But those goals are what we need to be moving toward to ensure that each child that we have the privilege to educate is getting everything that they need so that they are future-ready. So with that, we will open it up for questions. Thank you.
Great presentation, as always. Thank you so much. I've noticed since you guys have been coming up here, every time you come, it's so much new learning. Thank you so much for that. You're just expanding the walls and expanding our brain with so much information. So thank you so much for that. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Ms. Porter?
So with the emphasis on improving the amount of Tier One interventions that we're doing, I'd like to know what kind of support the teachers in middle school have when it comes to the tools? What is it that they're given so that they can provide that intervention? I'm particularly thinking about, we discussed the Orton-Gillingham resources in the past and, and reading resources for our middle schoolers that are age-appropriate and designed for middle school students. And then, what does it look like in the middle school situation where you're trying to provide intervention for students?
So, good question. And, and I think that one of the things that is really, really key when a teacher is designing instruction is being responsive to the students that are in the classroom. So, there's a lot of planning, there's a lot of materials, there are lots of trainings that teachers go to. But being able to take all of that, know where each child is, and then make modifications is a basic move in the classroom that's really, really key. So, using all of those pieces to make the appropriate decisions for each child in a classroom. And that's really, really hard. It's actually, I think, 20 years ago, we would say that being able to differentiate very strongly and do small groups in a really effective way was something that a master teacher did, that you did it after you had been in the classroom for a really long time. In this new time that we're in with the student needs that we have, it's actually basic. This is something that everybody has to be able to do. And that is a big switch, that is very different, and it's a really high-level skill. So, when we talk about what we're using in a Tier One classroom, it is about materials, it is about having the appropriate training, but it is also about having strong coaching. It is about being able to try new things. It is about really pushing around some of those instructional strategies that we know, not just little strategies, but big moves, like doing small groups, like making sure that you're doing lots of formative assessment in the classroom so kids know where they are and parents know where they are and teachers know where they are. Those big moves are very, very important. And each of the schools is working on its plan to really support teachers in those big instructional moves. And our district team stands ready to support with a lot of the material, the curriculum, the PD, all those pieces as well. But it is a big job. Teaching is a big job. And we gotta make sure that our teachers have the support that they need to do what they need to do. Because also, the teachers that are coming into the field right now are a little bit different. We have a lot of alternatively certified teachers. We have a lot of international teachers. They too have different needs that have to be differentiated for. So, it is a new reality and there is a lot to do. But I do also think that when our schools focus on continuous improvement, that process is about figuring out what works with the kids and the teachers and the folks that we have in our building. Because things will continue to change. The thing that worked five years ago will not necessarily work now. So it is constantly a changing environment. So I hope, Ms. Porter, that that answered your question.
I have a follow-up. So with analyzing some of the gaps that they may have in middle school, I know in the elementary setting, it happens often where you have someone come in who gives you the breakdown of how to use those reports that you receive from MAP, like thinking about Descartes and so forth. Do they also do that in the middle school setting where they're, especially with our international teachers and this new, what you just stated?
Right now, because the assessment is such a key to really knowing where kids are, our specialists and our instructional teams run by Dr. Atkinson and Mr. Newton actually go in and do benchmark reviews with teachers to make sure that they can look at those data in a way that really makes sense to them so they can make instructional decisions. We have Mastery Connect in our district, which is a good tool. It is not the be-all, end-all, but is a good tool for teachers to be able to design assessments, give those, get instant feedback about what standards are, what standards students need, and make some of those instructional decisions. But we have lots of other options as well. We give MAP, which shows student growth. And you can pull reports out of the NWEA, that's the company, and NWEA platform to help guide some of those instructional decisions. But there are lots of tools out there. And there's a learning curve also with all of those tools. So just having the tools is really not enough. It's really gaining good facility with those tools, being able to use them, being able to know which tool when is the one that I need to use is also one of those skills that teachers have to develop. Let me just, would you say anything else, Dr. Coleman?
One of the really wonderful things about our middle school principals is they function as a collective. It's really quite fascinating to watch them. And last year, they made the decision to utilize MAP more frequently than was required by the district. And it wasn't an intent to test kids more because one thing I will tell all of our principals, if you're just given a test to give a test, then you're wasting your time and kids' time. But to use that, so Ms. Porter had a giggle when you mentioned Descartes because there's kind of this line of those of, I'm not looking at you, Dr. Elkin Scott, this line of us who have all been using MAP for a really long time. It used to be called Descartes, now it's called the Learning Continuum. And so it's, but I had a giggle because it made me feel a little bit better because I'm trying not to call it Descartes. But actually, now in the MAP platform, there's a really nice electronic. If you go way back, we used to all tote around a Descartes book that was about this thick and we would flip through it and try to find what we needed to do. Now that's all electronic. And our middle school principals have already asked me to be at a couple of their meetings this year to go through how we work through it. Elementary has too. So I think like as we're kind of trying, as Ms. Morrison said, figuring out what works and what doesn't, it's really inspiring to see our principals and our schools go, okay, we gotta try something different. And it's really interesting from my perspective to watch them use data a little bit differently. And, and not, not to test more to test more, but if it's instructionally important. Mr. Newton and I were talking about the other day, one of the elementary schools wants to give an additional administration a MAP. And we talked about that Red Cross remediation. And so when you give that spring MAP, what is your plan to target the kids who you know that you still have an opportunity to provide some additional? I'm hearing our principals say they're using at-risk money to hire a certified teacher to come in for that short period of time. It's hard to find a certified teacher for a long time anymore. But how do we kind of piecemeal what, what our new reality is and how we can utilize our funds to get that really targeted instruction and assistance for our kids?
Board members, are there any other questions? Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. So, I know I'll get some raised eyebrows when I ask this, but we take our benchmarks online because I find it just really hard to wrap my brain around that the, the data children, the cellphone babies are having a difficult time understanding the technology and that that's one of the reasons why we are seeing a decrease in our English scores. I get it because they're reading online. But I think about kids who are using Kindles and all of those different things. I understand you, all of that. So are our benchmarks online and do they mimic what the state assessment actually is going to look like?
So, I will speak to this first and then my squared partner may need to jump in as well. So, I would say this. So, just quick. So, when I was a college professor at Newberry College, I taught education classes and lots of very, very data-literate, well, technology-literate students were there. And then one day, I needed to go to a conference. And I said, okay, well, we're gonna have class, but we're gonna have class on Twitter, because it used to be called Twitter. And we're going to run class on Twitter. And I know everybody in here is on Twitter. Everybody said yes. And then they had such a hard time because working on Twitter as social media versus Twitter as a true class discussion and a class structure was completely different. So it is true that we have benchmarks and they are tied to the state standards that will be tested. They are shorter, they, it is a somewhat, sometimes friendlier environment. There are lots of pieces that go into it. Then I think that quickness and sometimes the habits that student have, students have, don't translate well when we get to those longer assessments. But it is true. I think that, you know, yes, they are online, but I also think having good habits, but when we get to the end, will make all the difference as we move. But you're right, that's a really good point. Thank you.
And then my other question is, I'm the ELA person and I, I'm a little sad that we're putting all of our eggs into the math basket. So I wanna know what kind of support are we going to be doing for our ELA teachers since we are seeing decreases in our ELA scores? But not only that, we heard last time about reading instruction and how our students are not reading on grade level. And so I wanna know what is our plan to focus on English instruction and provide that additional support? Because I have to piggyback off of what Ms. Porter was saying. I have a middle school background. We were not trained in small group instruction. We were, we were taught certain techniques to teach middle school students more like secondary students. And so when that comes to a class, and I think about middle schools that I've visited, there are sometimes 30, 33 middle school students in a classroom, especially some math classes across the district. And so to say that we've got to create that, that intervention within the classroom, that is a struggle for middle school teachers. And so I wanna know, especially for our ELA teachers, what are we doing to support them in those areas? Because if the students are not performing on grade level, and I'm looking at our reports and these scores are dipping, what are we gonna do to make sure that we can get them back to the, to where we need to be so that we're seeing the progress and that we're not seeing this constant roller coaster? And I know that the pandemic has an effect on our students. But I want to know proactively, what are some things that we're doing to support our middle school ELA teachers? Especially those, and I can think of four schools right now that their middle school, their English and math classes have large classes.
Before you answer that, let me just say this. I know Ms. Washington indicated that middle schools have not been trained in small groups, but she is not referencing Richland Two because she did not work in Richland Two. And I'm going to testify that even today, when Dr. Moore and I had an opportunity to visit some schools, Blackwood Middle was on top of their game with small groups with 30-some students in the class. And let me say, I visited another middle school who also is very familiar with small groups and I witnessed that. So I don't want anyone to be confused to think we're not doing that in Richland Two because a lot of our teachers and our schools are doing that. It's just sometimes when we visit, we may not have the opportunity to see that. And sometimes, as administrators, you might walk in and do that five-minute visit and you miss, and a teacher would say, and Molly, you know, darn, I wish you had come five minutes sooner, you would have seen X, Y, Z. So I just want to put that out there, but I'll turn it back over to you.
That's true. And certainly, I did not mean to imply that our classrooms are not. I just think that with Tier One, there are pieces that we're really trying to put strongly in place across the board. So I do have my colleagues in here and, but I don't think we necessarily, we can always add details later to make sure that we have a good, a good comprehensive answer for the question. So we do have new, so first part. Number one, we don't forget reading when the focus is on math. Because math, in a lot of ways, is reading. And so it is reading of a different language. And, and we actually, when we think about, we'll talk about this during high school, some of the performance on other EOCs other than ELA are often dependent on a student's ability to read, including Algebra I. And so, so what are we doing? So we have new ELA standards this year. So we have new pacing guides, we have new materials, we have a lot of interactive materials that are, that teachers are using. There's very, very clear instruction about what to use when with those materials, both at the elementary and the middle and the high school level. And so there's that. And, and I think too, one of the things that our reading specialists are working on is making sure that student, because that students have time to actually do lots of reading, lots of reading, because reading is improved by reading. And so you have to read. And, and it's easy to watch videos or do lots of other things, but reading is really key. To become, to become a better reader, you have to read. So, we do have new materials, we have very, very strong pacing guides, we have lots of coaching and support for teachers around that. I've been in classrooms, I see teachers using the materials. And, and I think that emphasis on reading has not stopped. I think we just have some focus on math because it has been such a struggle. But chances are, when we progress in one area, we're gonna be able to progress in some other areas as well. I think we saw a dip last year in ELA Four, probably that change, but there could be other things involved as well. But we do have a strong focus on reading as well.
Okay. And I certainly wanna say thank you for the subgroups, providing the update that you're gonna provide to the board. In that, is it, it's approaching, does not meet, meets and exceeds? Is that gonna be in the?
Yeah, we would have that by subgroup, I think.
Because the data that we saw here today and the last time, it only talks about the meets and exceeds and the does not meets. There's another category for, that's approaching, right?
I believe, yes. Yes, I think that sometimes those students, yeah, we wanted to make sure that when we share the data, this time, we're not trying to hide anything. We just wanna make sure that we're sharing what would be considered passing. And then really, we wanted to make a point, because this is part of our new reality, that we have a growing population of students in both ELA and math that are does not meets. And it's really important to recognize that and address it.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you, Dr. Scott. I have a question about the strategic plan goals. And we have that the baseline was 21, 22 school year and that all of them are by 2028. Have we broken down, are there annual goals broken down? Because everything says, you know, in the future, it's to be determined. And if so, can we get those goals that have been established in a board brief?
Yes, ma'am. You guys do actually get that. We send in a board brief. So when you have a goal that's a 15 percentage point growth from the start to the fifth year, they're broken into increments of three. If it's 15, it's broken into increments of three. If it's 10, it's broken into increments of two. And we do give an update every spring when we resubmit it. It comes in the board packet showing goal by goal where we wanted to be and where we were. Because they are, there are interim goals for every year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Board members, are there any other questions? Okay, if not, thank you guys so much. Jen Two, thank you so much. Jen Squared, let's be correct here. Okay, we're going to move to item 8.6, Enrollment and Staffing at Pontiac Elementary School. Dr. Moore, I will now turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. But a point of privilege first, we do have two of our student leaders that are a part of our Myers Student Advisory Group. And I wanna just introduce them because in our first meeting, we talked about their role as student leaders and how to advocate appropriately for things that they are concerned about. And one of those was the free-to-focus policy that we will be discussing at the next board meeting.
Yes.
And so we encourage them to come to board meetings to understand how work is done, how policy is set. So I do want to recognize the student body president and Winter Day's chair, Ms. Kalen Hartwell. Please stand up. And our student body vice president, Ms. Jordan Benjamin. Student voice is very important to us, and I know it's important to the board. And I encourage them to come and share or to be a part of the process. And when necessary, to come and speak during public participation time to advocate for what they believe is important for us as the leadership of the district to consider. So thank you, ladies, for being here.
Thank you, guys, for being here. And we would encourage you to go into education. We need more teachers. Thank you.
We've had that conversation too. With that, though, we will now shift our focus back to staffing at Pontiac Elementary School. So tonight, board, I'm going to ask Mr. Will Anderson, our chief of operations, to give the first part of the presentation. And then Dr. Franklin Foster, our senior chief of human resources, will conclude the presentation. In this presentation, you're going to see a history of Pontiac as far as class sizes over the last five years. Then we will transition into where they are currently at, as well as what additional support and resources that have been provided to address the needs that have been identified at the school. So at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, and good evening, Dr. Franklin Scott and members of the board. I'm glad you said Dr. Foster would join me because I walked through by myself. Hint, hint. It's okay. It's okay. So anyway, we'll jump right in to the information. You all had an opportunity to, to see this hopefully prior to the meeting, but I wanted to go over quickly. You can see our enrollment has grown at Pontiac Elementary School. This includes all of our Montessori, includes all the students on campus. The next slides, we will talk more about just our non-Montessori students. I saw Ms. Robbins here. And as you know, our Montessori is kind of capped in terms of what, how many students they can, they can accept per their class sizes, whereas we don't have a cap if someone moves into the area. So we have to accommodate all the students, students who are zoned for those schools. Also, put on this slide the building capacity, and you can see where it changed from seven-hundred to seven-eighty. Now, that's different than program capacity. Program capacity is almost, changes based yearly or even, even more frequently based on how the spaces are designed, are used. So for example, we have just added a kindergarten class, which Dr. Foster will speak of, and that class may have been used in a different, different function before. And so that, that changes the program capacity. We work with the schools to monitor those, but these numbers are based on our building capacity. And you can see how we did increase the capacity by adding the art, music and library. And we were able to convert classroom, convert these old spaces into additional classrooms to add more capacity on the, on the building. Here you can see our class sizes over the last five years, and you can see it compared to the district elementary average. You can see that we have, have grown, and the class sizes have gotten larger over the last five years at those levels. And you can see that kind of mirrors some of the trends of the enrollment sizes as well. Here you can see the grade level teachers, and I'll go back just real quick and remind, this does not include Montessori enrollment ratios. These are just non-Montessori students. This is a similar situation. These are non-Montessori teachers. These are students. These are teachers that are non-Montessori. Two things I want to mention is the twenty-four, twenty-five data is reflected as of October the first. The other previous data is reflected as of day ninety of that year. We've historically used day ninety as the, as the most stable number throughout our process. And that twenty-four, twenty-five, as I mentioned, included October first. So how does that compare to what we projected? And so our projections, and this includes all of our Montessori students. Again, to get a, get a feel of how large the campus is, we projected eight hundred and twelve students. You can see we, the projections were under what actually occurred. The largest increase off a projection is the kindergarten students as well as our third grade. What we were able to discover with the help of Dr. Coleman and Mr. Grant Hamilton is that we had fifty-nine new students alone come from the Ashcroft subdivision. That subdivision is the one adjacent to Pontiac Elementary behind it. Some new clickers. Give me a second. There we go. And then this slide shows our projection based on the current teachers. And then it also shows our ratios, and then the ratios based on day eleven, and then the things that Dr. Foster will talk about after, after this slide of the things we, we did to help accommodate those ratios. And so you can see where those ratios were on day eleven, and then where they are as of October the first. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Foster, and him and I will be here for any questions.
So I had the privilege of working with Dr. Peralta on the growth coverage throughout this entire, during that entire nine weeks. So it's been a pleasure to work with her. Being a former elementary principal, I was quite excited to be able to do that and be able to support at Pontiac. So just to kind of give you an idea of what the growth coverage is, this growth coverage is just to be able to get us through for this year. And as we are going through the planning process and staffing allocations for next year, there may be changes based on enrollment at Pontiac or other schools. So these are just tentative plans that we put in place to accommodate the staffing for this year. So we added the kindergarten teacher and an assistant there. That was two FTEs that were added to the school. And as we talked about earlier in the previous presentation, we used funding from three FTEs, three instructional facilitator positions to cover that. Two for the teacher and one for the instructional, for the kindergarten assistant. We added us, and that class is fully operational now. The teacher's there and the teacher assistant is there. We added a second grade teacher to Pontiac, and we use that through going through our process of looking at board policy GCK. That's where we have the opportunity to reassign staff. We identified a position at a school that did not need the position due to enrollment there. And we reassigned not the, not a person, but the vacant position to the school and downsized that school's allocation for this year. But it was not a teacher. It was actual, a vacancy. And Dr. Peralta has filled that vacancy, and the teacher started on Monday. And I must say that I must say thank you to Ms. Robbins, as well as Dr. Folk, who is one of our district office staff. They took upon themselves to work with Dr. Peralta and started the class about two weeks earlier? Two weeks earlier. So they, Molly took the first part of the, of the day, and then Dr. Folk took the second part of the day. So I appreciate them stepping in while we were looking for a teacher. And they didn't know how long they were going to have to do this. So luckily, we were able to find a teacher to accommodate that second grade. So we do have a teacher for the second grade, and that she started on Monday. So she's in the class with her, her students. And then we added a fourth grade teaching position. Same thing, use the prim policy GCK. We met, we identified a school that did not meet the enrollment, projected enrollment with the actual enrollment, and we transferred again a vacancy, not a teacher, to that school. So that fourth grade teacher is in place at the school as well. Because of the need at the school, we identified, and Dr. Peralta had asked for an additional intervention teacher. So we assigned an intervention teacher to her school, and we used the funding from two instructional facilitator positions to cover that. Teachers we covered, used two to cover the salary for the teacher and one for teachers, for instructional assistants. We added an instructional facilitator for related arts support, of course, with additional classes. Oh, thank you.
No. Your time is extended, sir.
We added additional instructional facilitator for related arts. Of course, when you add additional classes, thank you, Will. You add additional classes, you're going to need additional support for related arts. So we did add additional support there. And we used just one instructional facilitator position to cover that need there. Because there still was a need in kindergarten, I mean, first grade and second grade with the numbers to assist them, we added two instructional assistants for first grade and second grade. And we used the funding from two instructional facilitator positions to cover that. And Dr. Peralta is making recommendations for those teachers at this time. We should have those by, in the morning to process for hire. And then we added an assistant principal at the school as well this year, and we used a vacancy from the district office position to cover that vacancy at the school for this year. So those are the positions that we've used to, that we've added to Pontiac for this year to cover the growth coverage at the school. And as I shared with you, this is temporary for this year, tentative plans. And of course, as we go into the budget process for next year and allocations for staffing, that will all be taken in consideration for next year as to what the needs will be for the school. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson and Dr. Foster. And just so, if board members are wondering what that district position was, it's our technology integration specialist that we made a decision, I made a decision, to shift to provide additional support to the school. So at this particular point in time, Madam Chair, we'll open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Foster. And Mr. Anderson, got a blog. Mr. Anderson, board members, are there any questions? Mr. Trapp, are you still on with us?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Do, do you have any questions, Mr. Trapp?
Uh, no. The only comment I, I guess I would make is it would appear that the administration is doing a really good job. I mean, I'm, I'm impressed with how they've, they've pulled this off. And I would encourage them to continue to, you know, be diligent and do what we need to, to get the children taken care of, because that's really why we're all here, to make sure that our children have an opportunity for quality education. It looks like you're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. I see Mrs. Washington, you have a comment?
Uh, yes, I just want to have a request that administrate, administration provide the same data for our other elementary schools, middle and high schools in terms of enrollment. And then are there any other schools that brought up the same concern as well? You can provide it in the board brief. Thank you.
Okay. In a board brief? Okay. Thank you so much. Are there any other comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, how many, do we know how many new students we have in Richland Two this year?
Is that related to?
It is.
Pontiac?
I'd have to get that in a board brief. Top of my head, I don't know.
Okay. Do you have an estimate, like three hundred, four hundred?
We grew by like a hundred students total this year. Dr. Coleman, do you remember? Is that right? Yes, it's like a hundred students total.
Okay. Well, and I, thank you. That's, that was sort of what I was looking for. Because my concern is, but Pontiac Elementary grew by eighty-seven students. They essentially obtained or took in all of the growth in our district.
Yes, ma'am. And that kind of goes back to the question earlier and the other topic about the moving positions around. So the, the, anyway, but yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And then I guess one of my, my next question would be, in some of the information that the board received regarding this, it's my opinion that, well, my understanding, let me start with that, was that the review was August first of the enrollment at Pontiac Elementary, or there was some type of sit-down meeting reviewing how many students were going to be there. To me, that seems a little late, especially with school starting on August seventh.
So let me go back a little further. So we start monitoring enrollment on a daily basis, basically about fifteen days out before the, the start of the school year. And so when we start doing the daily, and it's actually when the power school rolls over. And so we're monitoring and monitoring. And Mr. Hamilton, who's in Dr. Coleman's office, was showing this data, like, oh, we got it. So Dr. Coleman and I, Mr. Hamilton got together, and we're the ones who started saying, all right, we, we got to look, we got to dig deeper in what's going on at Pontiac. We already started the conversations with Dr. Foster and Dr. Franklin about additional positions. And I believe it was, forget what day it was, and we did the fourth grade early. It was first, before the school started, we went ahead and made a decision to move that. But the first is when we started having much larger discussions about what, what is short-term and long-term for Pontiac? When we noticed that this wasn't a anomaly, this wasn't a no-show situation, this was a, a big situation we needed to address. So that's when, sorry for the confusion on the date, but that was really when we hit the ground running on getting those position there, that first position there.
But so it's August first was when we really started to pay attention to it, six days before school started?
No. We'd already made, I mean, we had a teacher there by the second, third. I mean, we, we already made that decision by then. We were paying attention a, a long time. It was by then we just thought, okay, this isn't just for this year. We need to start thinking, this is a lot bigger situation. Again, the, the data further out is not, it's, it's, it's still, the registrars are still working the data. It's still a mess. So it's hard for us to make any real, real solid decisions until we get closer, because we don't want to move someone twice or move a position. So we're trying to monitor that as close as we can to the first day of school.
Okay. And I, I guess my concern is.
Wait, wait, Mrs. Agostini. Let me come back to you. I think Mrs. McFadden has a question, then I'll come back to you.
So on the budget, it was requested that we had seven new teachers, an increase for growth. So how many should we have actually gotten for this in order for it to be covered with the position that Pontiac? Because we have seven. So how many more would we have actually needed to ask for?
Um, I'd have to go, we, I don't have all that data in front of me, but we have standards for every school based on their pupils in poverty, based on other factors. And so we try our very best to have every school to the standards that we set based on our enrollment projections. As in the, when we were doing projections in the January of last year, December, January, February, we had a lot of schools that this was not going to be a one-time change. In particular, some of our secondary schools, their standards were way off from where our projections. Westwood High School is a prime example, Spring Valley, others that were not where they needed to be. But that would be coming and, and really making some, a lot of changes to, to move in teachers and a lot of added FTEs. And so seven FTEs were kind of also then working with our finance department on what the budget could actually handle. And so we still have, and I'll be happy to share, as Ms. Agostini asked for district-wise, what our standard is for every school, where we're at currently, and then what the FT, what, how many FTEs plus or minus would get us to where we need to be at the standard? We have that information, and we'd be happy to share that with you.
But Ms., Ms. McFadden, if you look at the notes, you'll notice that we transferred vacant positions. So those FTEs were part of the seven. They were vacant, and so that's what we transferred.
You're saying the, the seven that, that were from the growth?
Mm-hmm.
So the seven that were from the growth are what was used? Those were the vacant ones?
They were vacant positions. That's what we used.
So the, so, but there was a couple of them from, I guess, a middle school and an elementary that from the second grade and the fourth grade, those two went over.
Yes.
So then there were seven more. So that's like nine right now.
Yes, you would add three more to it, but we used what was vacant and shifted. And that's what we do after the ten-day count is because, not in the case of Pontiac, but in general, what happens is we will have projected enrollment, and students don't show up. And so we do a first-day count, we do five-day count, and then we do a ten-day count. But, because by the ten-day count, we pretty much have a, a good assessment of how, if that student is going to come or not. And so then, after the ten-day count, is when we begin to look at where are we at, who is below what was projected, who is above what is projected, and how we can shift those positions around. Sometimes it is. projected, and how we can shift those positions around. Sometimes it is people, sometimes it is a vacant position. The reason for that is, when it's tough to find a teacher, to give a vacant position to a school makes it more difficult, because there are students sitting in the classroom that need to be educated. So, but we, we do not want to move a teacher unless it is absolutely necessary. And we use a very, a process that is very supportive of the teacher, to ensure that we are meeting that teacher's needs as well as the students in the classroom. So we don't take that decision lightly.
Thank you. Any other board members? If not, I'll go back to Mrs. Agostini. Ms. Agostini?
Thank you, Dr. Scott. We were talking about the addition of classrooms, I want to make sure I understand that. Were there an art room and the media center, you're counting those as two of the four?
So at the end of the Montessori wing, there was, these ladies have to help me better than I will, I don't know all of our schools, but there was art, there was music, PE, and, and so we converted those, we remodeled and extended out the Montessori classrooms to make them bigger, because as long as I've been working with Molly, she told me how much space those Montessori kids need. And so we made those larger, and we reconverted those classrooms to help with the growth at Pontiac. And so then in the middle now, if you haven't been there yet, we've got the library, the old library is now the gym, the PE, and we've got the library, and we've got an art room and a music room. Thank you all very much. And then we've remodeled the, the other classrooms down there. So we've added, added classroom space, added square footage.
We've added the space, but I guess my, the bottom line is, I did go there last week and took a visit. And my understanding was that in the addition or the renovations, that there were only two additional classrooms added on to it.
Yes.
Classrooms were-
Correct.
Yes, okay. And then just my final comment, I live out there, I've seen the growth, I've seen it coming, we can all see it. I sort of think this is a miss on the district part, but that's just my personal opinion, because you can see it coming and it's continuing where we live out there. Thank you.
Board members, are there any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for that presentation. We're going to move to 9.0 agenda items for next meeting. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Moore.
Thank you. I have a large stack of papers here that I was prepared for questions. But we are ready now to move to our next agenda for the October 22nd school board meeting, which is a regularly scheduled board meeting. The board meeting will start with the call to order at 5:30 PM, and we will then approve the agenda, move to executive session. During executive session, we will discuss student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, breach of contracts, employment recommendations, and certified releases, and then release back to public session at 6:30 PM. We will then move to the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, and then we will have our special recognitions of students, staff, and school recognitions and achievements. Move then to consent agenda, which we will then approve the consent agenda, which will include approval of the minutes from the previous meetings, classified employment releases, and in-district transfers, followed by public participation. Once we have heard from the public, we'll move to voting on executive session items, which would include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, breach of contracts, employment recommendations, and certified releases, and any as needed for items discussed in executive session. We will then move to new business action requested. This will be policy revision of policy BID, board member compensation and expenses. This will be the second reading of that policy. We will then move to new business, no action requested. We will have policy revision proposal, policy JICJ, which is possession and use of electronic communication devices at schools. We will then have also a presentation on human resources report on guest teacher services, and conclude with the 2023-2024 high school achievement report. We'll then review the next agenda for the November 12th, 2024 regular board meeting, and move to our if-needed items, which would be public participation, executive session, resume public session if we need to do that, vote on executive session items, conclude with board and superintendent comments and adjournment.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Board members, are there any revisions or additions you would like to see made to the next meeting agenda or a future agenda? Let me just mention that the next meeting agenda is full. So I would encourage you that if you do have items, let's consider that for a future agenda. Any comments from board members?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Porter?
I'd like, I move that we add a special education report to the month of December.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Washington to add a special education report for the December agenda. We will take a hand vote on that. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Mr. Trapp?
I'll vote in affirmative.
Okay, thank you. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Board members, are there any other revisions or additions? CNN, we will move forward. We will now start with board and superintendent comments. I would start with Mr. Trapp.
All right, thank you. You know, all I really want to do is just share a quick experience I had this weekend, and then a concern I have. This past weekend, I went with a church group to Augusta and spent Saturday cutting trees and things like that and helping people get the yard where they get access, things they really needed. And it really struck me just how devastating some of this hurricane stuff has been. There are places in Augusta where they might not have power for another month. And, and I thought to myself, what would be due here in the Midlands if we had power down, or power out in inaccessible areas of, you know, how would we take care of our students and everything? And that would be my concern I would like to share with everyone, but especially our administration. Earlier, someone mentioned that the pandemic had an impact on our education. And I think to myself, what some of the people, some of the children could be impacted by this hurricane, and how their education is going to be set back because there's no way they can have school if they don't have a home to live in. So I really would encourage all of us to look at our personal lives. I know I've spent the last week and a half getting generators running that needed to be fixed and things like that, so that I'm better prepared for a disaster here at home. But especially at our schools, I would encourage us to, you know, start thinking ahead about what we would do if we had a situation where we weren't able to have even virtual school with our children. What are we going to be able to do so our children don't lose months of education? And I would just encourage everyone to look around them and think about those around that can help out in situations like this soon. And just be kind and thoughtful of those that are just really suffering right now, especially North Carolina, and I keep many prayers. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Mrs. McFadden?
So I don't have nearly as much as what I had the other day, but I would like to say that I did attend the Forest Lake dedication ceremony the other day, and it, that school is absolutely amazing. Little kids are walking around on these great stairs and things. So I remember when we had the groundbreaking ceremony for it and to see the culmination of it all and all the work. Mr. Anderson and his team putting these things together and working with everybody, it's just amazing to see all these buildings going up. And thank you to the taxpayers for the 2018 bond referendum that helped to get our students in nice schools and the dilapidated buildings that need to be renovated and things like that I've spoke about before. But thank you so much for Mr. Anderson's team and for the taxpayers for helping with that. And that's all I had tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Washington?
So I want to say thank you to Principal Timoney and Dr. Wilson for a great Viking visit to all of the CTE classes. It was a joy to see the hands-on learning, especially in auto shop. I was like amazed that they even had my car in there working on it. I just want to say thank you to Dr. Jones at Catawba Trails for a great visit. And I want to give a special shout-out to the transportation specialists who were at the, who were in the classrooms at Catawba Trails, working with students while the teacher was working one-on-one with some students. And so that was great to see. And to Dr. Peralta and her team, thank you for a great class visit to the Montessori classes. And yes, those classes need lots of space. And I also want to say welcome to all of the new teachers at Pontiac. I had a chance to meet all of them. And finally, I want to say thank you to our partner, RC Pep. I feel like I need some pom-poms after I say that. The breakfast meeting was very insightful. I want to share a few takeaways from the panel discussion, focused on creating welcoming spaces for parents. If you are a mom, you understand how challenging it can be to navigate motherhood and education and football and all of those different things. And so parents need to feel welcome whenever they come into our spaces, so that they know how to navigate the education system. Be innovative with professional learning options for teachers instead of one-size-fits-all PD models. Students are under a lot of pressure. They're navigating making choices, they're navigating academics, they're navigating family dynamics. Kids feel better, and they do better when they feel supported. Relationships matter, so let's do all we can to make sure that our students feel like they belong. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter?
Thank you. I want to also share my gratitude for RC Pep as well. It was a very much engaging conversation, and it was a pleasure to see some of our own there on the panel, Ms. Kelsey Carter and Patrick Kelly, although he wasn't there as a Richland Two employee, but still, he was there. And then just to hear all the ideas on advancing public education, and, and also just having the opportunity to work with all those at the different tables and have small conversations and connections. So while I was sitting there at RC Pep, I was able to have a conversation with one of our partners with EMS Closet. And it was perfect timing, because EMS Closet, they provide a plethora of things to our social workers, such as support for our students with clothing, socks, underwear, and hygiene materials and things like that. And I was speaking to the woman next to me, and she said that they were definitely using all of those supplies during the time of the hurricane and were pretty much depleted in certain areas. So just a shout-out to EMS Closet for always being there and being so supportive to our social workers. Know that if you, if you have it, there is a need for clothing, but specifically underwear and hygiene supplies to replenish what they have there. Also, to know that those of you, those in the community who may not know, because maybe they haven't used that support resource before, but during these times of need, it's definitely okay. There's only, there's not a requirement that you have, that you have to meet in order to reach out to EMS Closet. So you would want to reach out to your school's social worker at any school if there is a need, and, and share that with them, and they will reach out to the partners. Also, thank you to Dr. Vanessa Guyton for speaking to us today. I'm using our Hush No More notebook as we're speaking. And I'm reminded of, of you being a perfect person to invite for an in-service session. So I have conversations with educators all the time about some in smaller areas like in support that don't see presentations at in-service that are specific for their role, because it's, it's something that's, that not everyone can present on. So we might have to extend and go outside the box and find outside speakers to present in service. So I was thinking about you as you were talking, saying, yep, that would be a perfect person to come in. Hint, hint. And that's it that I have. So thank you so much. And Forest Lake Two, thank you for the dedication ceremony. It was absolutely beautiful.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you, Dr. Scott. I want to thank all of the presenters tonight for their presentations, and a special thank you to all of our employees who continually come out here and spend to choose their personal time coming to the board meetings. Thank you so much. And then finally, my thoughts and prayers to all of those that were impacted by Hurricane Helene, and prayers for safety and good health for those that are in Milton's path. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash.
Okay. First, I want to say thank you to Hush No More for coming out, for your presentation. It's a very, such a very important message that I think we definitely need to keep talking about, especially for our young people, to know the dangers that are out there and make them aware of them. So thank you for that, for the students who came. Thank you all for coming out tonight. And then everybody that, as always, it's always great to see you all, and I love seeing like the different faces that are showing up to the meetings. It really does something to my heart to see that, because again, that's something that I believe that all of us really want to see happen. It's National Principals Month, so thank you to all of our principals for everything that you do. And I wasn't here to congratulate Darcy Rush, our very own Darcy Rush, but she belongs to Columbia as well, but on receiving the Order of the Palmetto. So congratulations to you. So Helene Kamen, and I'm from North Augusta, so I don't know if you guys, many of you know that. And I just want to say a special thanks to Mr. Trapp for going down to Augusta and working into, in a, in a, in a community that means so much to me. And also, when I told him that my parents had two giant trees on their house, he was telling me the resources that we need. My dad is stubborn, so he cut those trees down himself, probably because the thought of coming to live with me for two months was too much. But who knows? But I do think that something that these storms have taught us in Helene is that I had family in the upstate that didn't have power, I have friends and family, you know, like I said, in North Augusta, and to watch a complete community that is just decimated. And it doesn't matter what your views are, or if you are on opposite ends of the spectrum, you may not have anything in common with the person sitting next to you. When trouble happens, you're all in the same boat. And what I've seen from community after community is that they work together. And that is something that I think that we can't take for granted in this time that we're living in right now. And lastly, I wanted to say something about our board evaluation. We judge ourselves pretty harshly, and I think anybody who wants to do well does that. But I do want to give a kudos to the board, because in the last year, we've been able to see a lot of different things happen. You guys are a result of that. But one of the things that we talked about on there was trust. I'll tell you guys, trust is something that is very hard to do with even your own family members. So it's something that takes over time. But what I do believe is that if you have people on a board that you can trust, that they have the best interest of those that they are working for involved, then you can get a lot of things done. And so there have been many things that I am very happy, from efficiency to these meetings, which I know that you guys like a little bit shorter, because we've gotten great feedback about that, to even just some of the community events we've been able to have, to just even the presentations, being able to work along with the administration. And so although, you know, we want to have trust, we also want to gain the community, the trust of the community. And I think that we are working in an effort to do that. And part of the thing is looking forward and not looking back. So that's all my comments for tonight. Love each other, and I will see you guys next time.
Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as everyone has been talking, I do want to give just some updates on our work around Hurricane Helene, because we did do our e-learning on Friday, September 27th, and Monday, September 30th. The reason we did it from Monday to 30th was not because our buildings were not available, it was due to staff. And we wanted to be sensitive to the needs of our staff. We knew a lot of our families were still without power, or trying to get to their loved ones, to their elderly loved ones to take care of them. So I know students were wondering that question, and now you have the answer. But I also want to let you know that we did serve more than- more than 200 meals to students at our different, um, five schools that we had open. Our power outage and property damages were reported, that were reported throughout the district were minimal. And we basically escaped a lot of the issues that our fellow school districts in the Midlands were dealing with. But I want to thank our operations team because they were out on the roads on Friday. They moved food from the buildings, uh, that did not have power because we had one school that, up until Saturday evening, that had partial power. So they were out and about doing what they needed to do and they don't always get recognized. So I just want to say thank you to Mr. Anderson and his team because it was our maintenance team, our food service personnel, as well as our, um, custodial services that were out there ensuring that we were ready to host students again on Tuesday. And with that, I just want to offer to my friends and family in the Tampa Bay area that we are praying for you as this storm moves through and know that, uh, we will, as we have always done, uh, survive and thrive once the storm has gone through. Now, a few other things, a little more lively. We had a wonderful candidate forum on October the first, so I want to extend a very heartfelt thank you to our teacher forum who developed the questions that the candidates were asked during, uh, that, um, event. I want to also let you know that we had about 200 people in the audience that came out. And why is this so important and why am I taking time to talk about it? Because as I shared with the candidates, um, in their orientation, to me, running for the school board is the most important position that you can run for as an elected officer. Because you set the conditions for success for students, which sets the conditions for success for our future. So I want to thank the people that came out to hear the candidates. I want to thank our performing arts, uh, center, which is still not fully open, for providing us a place, um, to host this event. But, um, if you did not see it live, you can go onto our district website and watch, uh, the forum and hear from the candidates. Speaking of elections, students at Westwood, Rich, Richland Northeast, Spring Valley, Ridgeview have all hosted voter registration drives for their students and recruited volunteers to work the polls this election season last week. And the Black Student Union at Blythewood High School will be hosting their voter registration drive on Friday during lunch. Our young people don't always get credit for the things that they do, but they are very active in Richland too. And I want to celebrate them, uh, for the work that they do. So when we think about elections, most people think of the magical age of 18. But did you know 16 and 17-year-olds can apply to be poll manager assistants in Richland County? Our students are volunteering to do that because they are purpose-driven and future-ready. Want to also celebrate Forest Lake Elementary School. I'm not going to go into a lot of details, but what I will say is 1957 was a great year. And that's the year that, uh, Forest Lake opened their doors in July. But it's also the year in August of 1957, the world was graced with my presence. That's all I'm going to say about that. And as I close, uh, I do want to just let, uh, everyone know, you know, this is principal month, so we do want to celebrate our principals. Tell them thank you for what they do every single day. You know, as we have been touring schools, Dr. Scott was out with me today. This is a question that we ask people throughout the, uh, within the building. And so I would like to ask you this question. Why do you love Richland two? I want you to think about that because you never know when we might show up with a camera and ask you that question. But let's listen to what some of our employees across the district had to say about working for the best district.
I love working for Richland two because I'm a product of Richland two. I graduated from Rich Northeast in 1982 and I was a freshman while they were building the school and was always showing academic excellence. I love the diversity of the students and the opportunities that we can provide them on several levels to succeed athletically and academically.
The students, the students, they drive me to do all that I do for them. Bottom line.
The opportunity to engage with a group of amazing students who are dedicated to finding ways to better themselves both academically and personally.
I love that we are such a diverse school. Um, the students are great. They're so much fun to work with, so willing to learn, um, and so supportive of each other. And so we really are in a very, uh, fun and fulfilling environment.
I love the students. They're so talented. Oh, my gosh!
And so those are just some of our exciting, uh, Richland two family members that enjoy working here in Richland two. So as I close, I just want to remind everyone around my personal vision and mission and priorities for this school year. Because if you ask me why I like to work in Richland two, it is because of our students. And in order to make sure that we create the best environment for our students, we have to be fiscally accountable. We have to manage our human capital. We have to have an academic achievement focus. And yes, math is my focus, but we know, Ms. Washington, as Dr. Elkin Scott and I saw today, kids were using math vocabulary and using their reading skills to solve those math problems. And then of course, safety and security, creating a physical and mental environment where everyone feels safe and secure and where students can learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're working. Also, I think my colleagues have said this, but I do want to say happy Principals Month. You guys are so amazing. Thank you for all the work that you do. Thank you for coming in early, staying late, and sharing your lunch with students. I've been there, I know how that is. So thank you so much. Also, Dr. Guyton, want to say thank you so much for being the inspirational speaker. As you could hear today, many of our colleagues were impressed. And hopefully we'll have you back soon. Also, Dr. Guyton mentioned Hush No More, domestic violent walk, which would take place on October 19th from 9:00 AM until 12:00 PM at the Ermo Park. So if you are available, please go out and, and show your support for that on October the 19th. And want to say kudos to Dr. Sabrina Suber. Hats off to Dr. Suber. Dr. Suber took the lead on getting some students and even our principal from Richland Northeast to take part in a parade over the weekend, last weekend called Buddy's Not Bullies Parade. So Dr. Suber, I want to say thank you so much for taking the lead with that.